Okay. There everybody, hello? We will get started. Suzanne's coming in. Alright, I'll call this meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. This is the December 6 Village of Flowerhill Board of Trustees meeting. We have all the trustees in attendance. We're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Grabner, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Andrew? You can stay back there, it's fine.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That looks good, right? I'll just remind everybody that we do livestream the meetings now, so people can watch at home. So the meeting is being recorded and the, so the microphones are live. You know, this is part of the efforts that we've tried to implement to get more communication, more participation from the community. So if in the future you can't make it here, you can always watch live. The link is up on our website, it's attached to our meeting agendas. Alright, so let's move on to the agenda. First thing is, I want to just announce that I'm appointing Andrew Grabner to the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate. Mr. Grabner's here with us tonight. So thank you for coming down and thank you for volunteering your time. He's a real estate attorney during the day, so has a good handle on the issues and the experience in the matter. And your office is in New York City, correct?
Yeah.
Any other background you want? You're a Port Washington resident, correct?
Yeah.
Just introduce yourself a little bit for the board.
Andrew Grabner, Flowerhill residence, Manhattan. I'm a real estate attorney practicing for seventeen years or so. I go to my office in Manhattan, I also work at my home on, which is Flowerhill, obviously. And, you know, my expertise is in real estate. I'm very excited to be part of the board and, you know, I'm excited to learn how it all works.
Well, thank you for participating and volunteering your time, really appreciate it.
I just have the deputy clerk for the oath book, so while you're here, I'll have you sign the oath book and you will officially, in that regard, should refer to the zoning code.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, tonight we have several public hearings for the beginning of the meeting. One is a planning hearing and then we have three local law proposals. Ronnie, can you open those?
Okay, so can I please have a motion to open the public hearing portion of the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, then, Roseanne, you may enter your second.
My second.
For the community, all favor?
Aye.
Okay, first public hearing is a planning board hearing on lot line adjustments at sixty, there's sixty walnut grown. Could you, could you carry it please?
Sure. For the applicant John Farrell, I also drive thirteen hundred Veterans Memorial Highway, Suite 100.
And I'm sorry, sir, let me just interrupt for one minute, just for everybody's education here. So this is a planning hearing that the board is hearing. The applicant is, or representative of the applicant is going to present. We'll allow the boards to ask some questions and then we'll open it up to public comment. So please don't jump in and interrupt or the speaker at the time. Okay, we'll give everybody an opportunity to make comments and participate. Go ahead, sir.
Alright, the survey property is addressed, has the addresses of fifty walnut lane and sixty walnut lane. It's actually two properties. They're located on the south side of Walnut Lane, approximately five hundred and sixty feet west of Dogwood. The total property is five different tax lots. House number fifty is tax lots one oh eight, one oh nine, that's presently distributed.
Since we have, we're receiving these, which, are we looking at one of these?
So if you look at the, there's a survey with all properties on it. That's probably the easiest one to read, because, no problem. You can see they're identified, let's see, look there at the house number at the top. The house number is in the footprint of the lot. So one says number sixty, right above the posted story. That's on the, you're looking at it straight up and down on the right side of the survey. And house number fifty is on the left side. So house number fifty is the one that is approved with single family dwellings, one and a half stories with an indoor room. And house number sixty is currently under construction, that is four tax lots. Ninety-five, well, one of these, oh, sorry, three tax lots, ninety-five, one, six, and one, seven. Like I said, that's presently under construction. The applicant will be moving into this house once the construction is completed and is sealed. The combined lot area of the two properties about forty thousand six hundred and ninety square feet and each lot right now is one hundred thirty-five point six four feet wide and a hundred and fifty feet deep. My client's proposal is very simple. It's to shift the lot line on lot sixty to the west, about twenty-one feet. That would create two, still two lots. One would be one hundred and fourteen point sixty-four, that would be lot, house number fifty. And house number sixty would be one fifty-six point six four feet. The lot area would be, would change by about three thousand one hundred fifty square feet, so three thousand one hundred fifty square feet on lot. On house number fifty, we shift over to house number sixty. It's important to note that if the board were, is inclined to approve this application, the lots will still comply with the village code in terms of lot area and lot width. The proposal would be, would also include demolition of house number fifty and my client will ultimately sell that lot to either someone who wants to build a home or a developer. That would be, you know, at that point, that would be up to whoever purchases the lot, whatever they want to develop. If they need variances, they would obviously have to come to the board, but other than that, they would have to comply with the current zoning code. This proposed subdivision is very much in character with the surrounding community. There are twenty-four lots on Walnut Lane and twelve of those lots are one hundred feet in width or less. This lot, the resulting lot, smaller lot, would be a hundred and fourteen point six four feet. So it's still gonna be bigger than, more than half of the lots or about half of the lots on Walnut Lane. Also, the houses that immediately bought this property to the south along Dogwood, or Northwoods, I'm sorry, Northwoods Road, they are all one hundred feet or less, one hundred feet in width or less between the two, the two opposite side streets. So I think this proposal is in character with the community and it's not gonna increase the number of houses, it's not gonna bring any more residents to the community. It's just really shifting the lot sizes. With that, I would ask if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Gary.
Do you have what the average widths are? What's the average width, the median width of the lots on that lot?
I did not calculate the median width.
And then, my second question is, which, which, so, district is this?
So this is R4. The lots on Northwoods Road are in R5 district.
Right.
But in terms of determining the character of the community, I think you have to look at the properties that are closest to determine whether or not it's dramatically undersized or dramatically oversized. At the end of the day, this lot will still comply with the R5 zoning, so. I need to get the R4, R4 zoning, so, we'll still comply with the R4.
I guess my question goes to why is the extra square footage needed?
I think my client just wants a little additional square footage, wants a larger lot for his house. Doesn't really have any, he's at any other part of it, he just wants a lot, a slightly larger lot. He's got his own family, he'd like the extra space.
So there's no plans to expand the existing footprint? What, actually, just run us through the...
Well, he's building a new house, so.
Yeah, just run us through what is currently approved or, I don't know, if you can, maybe Peter can run us through what is planned for the property currently in the existing footprint, since the house is under construction? Is it just a one-story building? Is there gonna be a pool? Is there other things that have been approved for construction there?
I think it's a pool apartment.
I'm sorry, I haven't just had the team?
Oh, just give your name.
It's a building inspector. It has a pool apartment, patio in the back, and a single family home.
And that's all improved and gone through arc and everything, correct?
Yes.
Peter, so by expanding the square footage of the lot, it affects the lot coverage calculation, correct?
Right, so if they, if they have a larger lot, their lot coverage percentage will stay.
So what about gross floor area?
And the gross, they would have the ability to have a larger gross floor.
So the house would be proportionally larger than most of the other houses on the block?
No, the house, the house is currently under construction and complies with the, complies with...
The existing?
The existing, it complies with the existing square footage.
Conversely, yeah, just to clarify, conversely, the other lot, that they're making smaller, now, now a smaller, smaller covered, smaller house by the amount, you know, of the FAR for that reduction square footage.
So the house was designed prior to consideration of this expanded size, okay?
I guess what might be a good follow-up question to that is, are they, how close is the current FAR to the maximum allowed on this district?
Or the existing house?
In other words, no, yeah, the current constructed house.
Under construction now?
Yeah, right.
I don't have that number in my head.
Right, we could understand what more could be built out per the district limitation on this because obviously, there's probably a good, there's a good high probability that you could build more house based on percentage, but that would be limited, obviously, too.
Limited by zoning, right, the FAR based on the lot area.
Oh, my, the, right, based on the lot size, the district maximum size.
Right.
That, 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 that would be good to understand what that discrepancy is. So that you then can say, oh, can, you know, you can add five hundred square feet, but no more than five hundred square feet, even though by percentage basis you could go, you know that?
I mean, I, I think, I'm not, I think that's twenty, I think he's allowed twenty-eight percent FAR and I think we're adding three thousand one hundred fifty square feet, so six hundred square feet, thereabout.
Right, right, so the, yeah, so then my, yeah.
Well, that goes back to my question, are they adding that six hundred square feet?
No.
I said no, they don't have plans.
No, but it's, I think...
They're building a brand new house.
The question is, it's not gonna be fair.
I'm sorry, but because of the hearing, one of the times, I can't get to all.
They're building a brand new house, they're not looking to add anything to it.
I don't think the question is, for the current owner, the question is, is what could be built by any owner?
So...
And I understand that, but I think the net effect is you can, you can only have, you know, twenty-eight percent of forty thousand square feet over these two lots. So to the, the building inspector's point, if this house can go up by six hundred square feet, the other one has to come down by six hundred square feet. So the net effect is not gonna be to add gross floor area.
I'm not necessarily agree that way.
Yes, but another consideration in that is now you're left with a larger house, you're left with an even smaller house on a block and that's something we gotta take into consideration.
No, and I, and I understand that, but if you look up and down of Walnut Lane, there are a number of properties that are a hundred feet, that are smaller in lot area than this house.
So where are they located though? Because I know it varies, is that next door, is it at the other end of the block?
Directly across the street. I think it's... It's... It is seventy-five, eighty-five, ninety-five, one oh five, one fifteen, and one twenty-five are all one hundred feet in width or less.
Can you say that again, seventy-five, eighty-five?
Seventy-five, eighty-five, ninety-five, one oh five, one fifteen, and one twenty-five.
Thank, thank you.
And then also fifty-six Boulder, which is the corner lot, but it has frontage on Walnut Lane, is a hundred and seven feet. One oh four walnut, I mean, I'm sorry, twenty walnut is a hundred feet in width and thirty walnut is a hundred feet in width.
So is this the largest, like what is the, the...
So the largest lot in the...
On sixty, what's the, like, what's the, we know what the small ones are, so this is a lot larger than the small ones, but...
Um, it's not that much larger, this is, this would be less lot area than lot, house number ninety walnut. That lot's about thirty-two thousand square feet. It's got about a hundred and fifty feet of width and two hundred somewhere feet of depth.
What's the square footage of this proposed house?
The square footage on the proposed walnut is...
About five thousand.
About five thousand. Which is in line with...
Oh, I'm sorry, the proposed, the new?
The house that's under construction.
Oh, that's five thousand.
Five thousand. You know, that's in line with what's, what's on...
Let me go back to, she said there was a property that was a hundred and fifty feet in width and frontage?
I believe so.
What address is that?
It's ninety walnut.
Ninety, okay, because I think in the application it said the ranges were from there?
I'll go back and check that, but that lot, that lot is thirty-two thousand square feet, it's part of the biggest lot in the zero.
I mean, this, why are we, isn't, why wouldn't you come prepared with a drawing for us of this information? I don't understand, like, for me, it's very confusing to judge.
To see the other properties you're saying, yeah. Well, listen, I think, let's keep going through the questions, Gary, and that's something we can address afterwards, but we don't have it here, so.
Hold on, I just want to point out to the board that the lot with the house that's going to be demolished, are you still planning to keep the swimming pool?
We would be keeping the swimming pool until somebody comes in.
Okay, because that would be a violation of the code and you have to see variance.
We would have to get a variance.
So there's gonna be a vacant lot, in other words?
It would be a vacant lot once that house is demolished. The hope is that we can sell it and then we're going to construction, you know, quickly.
Hey Ronnie, just for the record, did the mailings go out? Because we didn't bring that up.
We have the green cards, we're seeing those. Up front.
Do you, there's a little, go just finish the...
Okay, hold, hold on, everybody. We'll get there, just wanna finish with the questions from the applicants. Perfect, now we're official.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
Okay. Can we just go back to the smaller lot for a minute? Can you walk me through again the dimensions of the smaller lot?
Yeah, sure. So the smaller lot would be one hundred fourteen feet, one hundred fourteen point six four feet and a hundred fifty feet in width. So it'd be seventeen thousand one hundred ninety-six square feet in lot area.
Okay.
And that is, is little over two thousand square feet larger than what is required by the code.
We, I just consulted with our council over something, so, you know, you know, we don't like to encourage people from creating vacant lots. They're just gonna sit vacant on a block and I'm sure some of the residents are probably not gonna be crazy about a vacant lot just sitting there for however long it's gonna take to sell it. So we're just checking, I just wanna make sure the code allows for you to establish, to knock down a house on a property without any plans to reconstruct the house in place.
It is, it is not prohibited by the code. You cannot get demolition permit without keeping plans by the architecture of the board.
Yeah, so that, that's where I'm going with this, because I thought, we've had that rule. So technically, you can't knock that house down unless you have plans to rebuild a new house in its place.
We'd love to sell the house beforehand, you know, that would...
But the, the house would have to remain on the other lot.
Yeah, that's, we can, we can, I mean, we can wait, that's not a problem. We don't have to incur costs at all, it's that simple.
Other questions from the board? Anything at this time? If not, I'd say let's open it up to public comment or questions.
If you have a question, do you wanna make a comment? Please raise your hand and give your name and address to the stenographer. Do stand up, people are wearing masks, it's hard to hear.
It's Ronnie Manos Petracas, P E C R A K I S.
P E C R A K I S.
One twenty-five Northwoods.
Thank you.
My name is Ronnie Manos Petracas, one twenty-five Northwoods and I stand for the board this evening. On behalf of and together with the various Northwood neighbors, including the Carciches.
Petracas.
Including Carcich, K A R C I C. Petracas, P E T R A K I S. Melvin, M E L V I N. Ayudo, A Y U T T O. Mick Morris, M C M O R R I S. Castovales, K O S, K O B O L I S. Jackelo, J A C K E L O W. Hopeen, Brennan, two N's. Petracas again, and Duran families. Making connection with this application. And essentially, Incorporated Villages are established for a reason and reasonable rules are drafted and they serve very important purposes, significant purposes to the overall benefit, the benefit of the overall residents of the village. Potential buyers of property in Flowerhill, they're on notice when they purchase a property or look for a property that they're going to be subject to certain additional restrictions that the village might impose. And to that end, an application for a lot line adjustment, like a variance, should be carefully considered. And a lot line adjustment in particular should be granted for extending conditions. There should be a compelling justification to support a lot line adjustment. Our understanding, and some of them are here and they'll make their own comments, but our understanding is that a lot line adjustment, as proposed here, is unprecedented in Flowerhill of this nature. And we would like to understand, really, what the justification is to support a lot line adjustment. I don't think, based on what council said, that the property on sixty walnut exceeds its FAR. Is that right? It doesn't exceed the current FAR?
I don't understand the question.
So, yeah, so which property are you talking about? We can follow up with this afterwards.
The construction on sixty walnut, the current construction.
The current development, the current one under construction, doesn't exceed the FAR, okay.
I don't know the answer to that, I assume, I...
It doesn't.
It doesn't exceed, so on the current lot, doesn't exceed the FAR. Because one example is if it exceeded the FAR, you could buy the additional property and suddenly fix the problem. Doesn't sound like that's the case here. But if it is conforming, then what we really like to understand is what does the land over really, over time intend to do with it and what's the future impact of this on the property? Because this additional space grants enough space where you can put size squares courts and you can erect other structures down the road, cabanas, outdoor kitchens, fire pits. I think there's pool plans already, that after a lot line adjustment is granted, you can have amended pool plans coming and suddenly you have tons of new construction on the existing lot. And so these types of things are things that consider a concern to us more broadly, not just residents of Northwoods. Also, in reducing the lot size, will the owner then request a variance to increase the lot size? So if the property's gonna be sold to a builder, that builder can then come, with no fault of that builder's own, can come in and request a variance to build a bigger house on the property that was once suited for the size housing they had wanted to build. That's a big concern. Could you put limitations on it? I don't know, but that, if that becomes a big concern, if it's not maintained. There are only, to me, there's only two vacant lots between the Gans old house, I don't remember, between the people who live in now on the Birch and Boulder, that have maintained an empty lot and the Phillips, Wayne Phillips house, who have joined property Smiths. I'm sorry, I don't know if you have this, I don't get any...
The Weedies, you're talking about the Weedie property on Birch, yep.
And those are, those are maintained as vacant land and not anything else, they're separate lots. But one of the other concerns we have is this is granted and the home is built, it's disproportionate on the now smaller lot. And so that, these are other concerns that we have. In terms of, just to address one of the points, I just wanna make sure that the fact, I know that council mentioned that the lots on Northwood are all a hundred by a hundred fifty, that's true. We're all here, we live on Northwood, we're all a hundred and fifty. And we talked about looking at surrounding lots and what those sizes were. Right around the corner is Birch and Boulder and Elder Fields, those lots are three acres. So you can look to those lots as well and see probably sized lots and what frontages are there. So I just wanted to point that out. They are here and I do wanna be mindful of everybody's time. We do, we have written a letter that we'd like to submit to everybody for consideration. But I'm happy to read it into the record, I don't know where, I just want to be mindful of time.
If there are highlights you wanna give us, that's fine, otherwise you can submit it to the record, we'll circulate it to the board for review and take your comments here orally as, as note, thank you. You, you can leave the letter with Ronnie, should she, to you?
I have a copy.
You have a copy, alright.
So I can certainly email it to the rest of the board.
Okay.
Anybody wants, anybody wants a hard copy?
I can scan it, I can scan it, I have to scan it, buddy.
That's fine, so, two things, I wanna note also that for comments, our limit is three minutes, right? I know you were speaking on behalf of a group of people, so we let you go a little over there, but just to keep control and order over the meeting, please keep your comments to under three minutes, if anybody else is gonna speak.
That's it, thank you, if anyone has any questions, thank you.
Any questions from the board? Okay. Um, just, I think, real quickly before we go, the next person will give counsel the opportunity to respond to any of that. And there were a couple of things that I just, I think I wanted to throw in, but go ahead.
Sure. I don't really have much to say, other than I was mistaken on the FAR, it's twenty-three percent, not twenty-eight percent. So it would be still around six hundred square feet, but less than what we've been talking about previously. Concerned the residents about a builder buying in and building and coming for a variance. That's the builder's prerogative to come for a variance, but it's, it's still gonna, it's still gonna require a variance. Anybody who buys, just like we purchased the property, we buy it with the notice of the zoning in the community, somebody's gonna buy this, whoever's gonna buy this lot is gonna know it's a hundred fourteen by a hundred fifty, it's seventeen thousand square feet. I can only get twenty-three percent FAR on this lot, I'm gonna have to make it work. I mean, I think my client, I don't think my client would object to a condition, but I don't know that you can legally impose a condition that prohibits somebody from going to the zoning board for a variance.
Okay.
But I think if you look at the surrounding community, I'm not sure a variance is necessarily justified because it seems like most of the houses are in compliance with what the code provides for, so.
Um, okay, any other comments you wanna provide or...
No, I mean, if you have any questions.
So I think this one's for our counsel, Jeff. Help us understand, we've heard from the residents that there should be a compelling reason. I think counsel just spoke to kind of the rationale for approval legally. Any comments you can provide us there as far as basis for approval? Help everybody understand what the board's kind of criteria for approval is.
Sure, generally, the criteria would be just being an administrative decision. Overall, it's a question of whatever the board does, making a decision that's rational and not arbitrary or capricious. But underneath that, is I think both counsel were alluding to, what the board will be looking at is how any proposed change here, if it were to come into fruition, would affect the surrounding areas and the character of the neighborhood. And some of the things that the board will be taking into consideration, for example, as trustee Janice pointed out, is that section of the code that knows that if a demolition permit is put in place, that it can't be granted until there's actually a site plan before the board for review and for the board to assess. This sort of a broad brush look at it.
Okay.
I understand both councils' point about if, because there's no proposed definitive structure on at least one of the lots, the question is, well, a builder can come in later and seek a variance. And that is true, and I think that is true. I also agree with counsel, but I don't think a provision could be put in that says that thou shalt not be able to ever go to the zoning board in the future. I think that that's, that's a bit of an overreach. However, there could be certain conditions to put on, to attach to the properties that would be reasonably attached to the properties, such as on the size of accessory structures or maintaining a certain size of those on the lot. It could be either negotiated or discussed, if the board thinks appropriate. And I can certainly prepare and oversee the board's use, but that's a general review of the types of concerns that come into play when the board is assessing this type of case and determination.
Okay.
I think the board should also consider, you know, the fact that even after subdivision, all lots are going to exceed the minimum zoning requirements. The zoning's been in place for a long time and even after subdivision, we're not asking for a lot that's going to be right at the fifteen thousand mark. We're actually still larger than what the code provides for in terms of lot area and lot width. And in terms of, you know, accessory structures and things like that, you know, we're limited to what the code allows and a larger sized property, it means we can, we can build a slightly larger back patio. I don't see how that... larger back patio, I don't see how that has any negative impact on the character of the community. I think people move to Long Island and live here because they want to enjoy their backyard, they want to enjoy the recreational space that they have. That's just a hint, I guess.
Alright, thank you.
Mayor, I could actually just, I do just want to make one other point.
Yeah.
The board actually would be called upon to make two different decisions here.
Okay.
So there would need to be a secret determination made, and there would also need to be a decision made on the substantive application before the board. For the purposes of secret, the question would be whether or not there will be any significant impact on the surrounding environment. But since you answered, I just do want to let, just for the full review, the board has been called upon to make both determinations. We go to that.
Okay. You know, one thing I do want to double check on is sizes on different blocks, because I know you mentioned Boulder has, I think, three acres, I don't know if that was the correct number you cited, but I know I live on Boulder and I don't have a great lot.
No, 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 other homes surrounding areas like Birch, Elder Fields that have.
There are some that are, yeah, much larger, for sure.
I think when you get out of a certain sphere, I don't think you're within the same community anymore. I think if, you know, we went off to Sam's Point and use that, then you'd be drastically undersized too. I think you're kind of, that's why I even only reference Northwood Road because it's adjacent. If it was on the other side of Northwood Road, I'd probably look to even mention that way.
Yeah, but, but just so you know, you're cherry picking one block that's right behind the home.
I'm not cherry picking.
Hold on, let me finish, sir, okay? Boulder is on the other side, Birch and Elder, and Birch is on another side of this. So these are all relevant blocks. If you're going to say the block behind me is one size, the village can look at the other surrounding blocks too.
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying.
Do you disagree?
I'm not saying what you can and can't look at, I was just talking about, you know, the way the courts generally look at this, they kind of define the areas within a radius or a reasonable radius.
What's a reasonable radius?
Courts have set anywhere from 200 to 500 feet.
Okay.
So.
I think, I think you've got a stronger argument of what's across the street than what's behind you.
I agree, that's why, and that's why I led with that. That's why I led with that.
So I think Northwoods, I wouldn't even talk about Northwoods, because people don't understand the lot sizes from the rear yard, they understand it from the front yard.
And I understand that, and look, Walnut, 50% of the lots are smaller than what we're proposing for our smaller lot.
I think I'm more concerned with how many are larger, and if it's only one, why is that larger? I just need to understand more, like, was it always larger? And so now all of a sudden you're taking all smaller lots and then now you have this one big lot, that I just need to understand that.
What are you trying to understand? The larger?
You're making it larger, and it's, I understand that the average is more toward the smaller lot that you're doing, right?
This lot, this lot would be, would be bigger, be, you know.
Than anything else on the block?
In terms of lot width, I, yes, in terms of lot width, it would be bigger.
That's, that's what I'm trying to get my arms around, like, to visualize, if you're driving down the street, I know the house is to code and all of that, but all of a sudden you see this one big, that's what I'm, you know, like, Northwoods is very uniform, right? And that's.
And I understand that, I think this, I think Walnut's a little bit more of a hodge post, the lots are all varying sizes, you know, on the smaller side, 89 feet, and the larger size, not including this one, 135.
So this would be the largest by far?
In terms of lot width, yes, but not in terms of lot area.
That's what I'm getting at, right?
I think a very easy way to see this graphically would have been to have a tax map. Basically, come with a tax map tonight that shows all the lots and it has the dimensions of the lots on them. So without that, we're kind of operating in the dark.
Alright, so, good point. I think we need more information. Thank you for responding to that comment, I want to give anybody else from the public a chance to comment if they'd like to do so, thank you.
Since you're up there, I'll ask you a quick question. Is it possible for the current lot line and the new proposed lot line to be marked on the property by a stake? So that we can come by and see what the difference is, instead of looking at it on a, right, should be, I think it would help me a lot.
It's existing fence, right? Is that existing fence still?
No.
I'm sure it came down during.
Where, where on this drawing is the current lot line?
But again, I think it would be easier for us if you could, if you could mark the current lot line and then with the 20 feet, the proposed lot.
Hold on, hold on, everybody.
And again, the flag, as long as it's written on the stake, something we can figure it out.
Okay, they agreed to do it, we can figure it out. Just trying to let this not evolve here, because the stenographer's trying to take notes. Alright, so let's give everybody else from the public a chance, unless you want to add anything to that, I'm sorry. Okay, we'll come back to the lot lines in one second, okay? Anybody else from the public would like to speak? Come on up. You can, whatever you prefer.
I'd like to just get your name and address. I'm 45, Northwoods, 33 years, in the community for 62, and, you know, it's embarrassing, but I love and have it. I think that Walnut is like crazy street. I didn't know Flower Hill, I grew up in Stratton-Vanderville, I grew up in Northwood's Park. We're very happy in our, paint house, five bedroom, we did big construction years, blah, blah, blah. I don't understand why anyone would go like this, I mean, with all due respect, and I hope I don't ever see you again. I just, I don't get it, because, you know, we're all trying to kind of live and respect people next to us, but aside, the village helps us out. What I'm getting at is it's a mess over there in my mind, there's, there's no conformity, like, we're all kind of in shingle, you know, the same type of look, and this, like, I walk over there and I'm just like, I mean, their homes, you look like they're falling down on you, so. Like, if it were me trying to make a lot bigger, I'd want something for it, you're paying for it, you're making this lot smaller, you're not paying that much money, I mean, like, what are you going to do, like, that's a quaint block anyway, you can play on the street with kids, whatever, people aren't speeding by. There's got to be more to it than just, I want a larger lot, I mean, I, I have a problem with that, and I think it's more, more so than anything, it's going to set a precedent for the future. Well, if they did it, like, how could you say no to us? And I think that's a problem, I think we have small lots, I grew up in Stratton-Vanderville, you couldn't really move in your backyard, you were pinned in, but that's the way it was, and it's the way it still is. But I think that, you know, at some point, we just have to say, no, this, this isn't working, and this is where you bought, there are bigger lots in Sam's Point, across the street, Flower Hill, you know, I love and have it, but.
Thank you for your comments. That brings up one other thing I wanted to comment on, the variances, not saw, this is a block that at one point had a lot of variances through zoning on floor area ratio. I know we got a lot of comments back on that, and I think we updated our code based off of that, some of that occurred in Walnut over the years. So I just, on the, hey, not a lot of variances would be given, we have seen a history of that, I think, on the block, and I think that predated even your time here, Peter, I could be wrong. Gary, Randall, or Frank, who are long, do you remember that, or?
I don't.
Okay, well, I don't think I'm making it up.
I think, I think what's, because there's less uniformity across the width of the lots, there has been some creep and, 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 you know, whatever is allowable by its own, especially now more than ever, that people are building out to the max, so that's why you do have a great discrepancy of massing of housing on the, of the houses on that block, so it is an issue that I don't, you know, we need to grapple with, but I don't, I don't think you have any type of danger.
Alright. Any other comments from the public? Anybody else want to join in? Come on up, sir. How you doing, Dan?
Dan, so, yes, we already have, thank you for your comments, we appreciate them. You know, our intention, to be clear, is not to build any more structures from our house or anything, because we already have the house, it's already framed, it's already going up, received approval, right everything to the fore, we didn't seek any variances when we came forward originally. We do have the pool that's going in at the corner, there's no plans to enlarge that or change the patio, everything's set as we presented it to the board originally. The intention really was to have a wider lot, just to have a little bit more space, it's about 15% larger lot, but to have more separation between the homes, because a lot of the homes are top of each other. And so we just prefer to have more separation, have more useable for a young family, if they like to play outside a lot, and that was it, especially when we consider the other lots on the block and how some of them are 96 feet wide, 100 feet wide, we felt by going above the minimum, by going from 100 to 114, it more than needs the code, and did, just to see if we had issues from our standpoint, but we understand that are concerns. Any questions I can answer, please?
Any?
I only have one question, would you consider adjustment to the, to the size you're looking at?
Of course. It's not to build the structure, so I don't need, we're already at our, what we want to do, so we don't need changes to our built plan, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else from the public? Alright, any other questions from the board? If not, I would suggest that we hold this over to the next meeting. I think the deputy mayor suggested the property owner, the applicant stake out the area so that we can get a better idea of what it would look like. And I think, you know, it would be a field trip for some of us to get to better judge the area.
And I thought we also wanted, this is like a tax map.
I'll get the, I'll get the tax map exhibit, I'll submit that, and I'll also give you the average of the lot width in the area.
And just to make, so then is there consent to the matter being put over in that state?
I mean, yeah, we're in a position to force the board to make a decision, so.
Okay, thank you very much. Anything else on that issue then, Jeff, from a legal standpoint? Ronnie, any questions or concerns? Alright, so, you talked about CECPRA.
And I would think that both issues can be carried in the next meeting, but CECPRA would in the end need to be decided first, but it may not be decided.
Okay. And CECPRA, for everybody's knowledge, is an environmental review standard, so I know people are probably scratching their heads right now. So I'll make a motion to continue this hearing for?
January 3rd?
January 3rd? Oh.
Then I would ask council?
Excuse me?
Yes.
I'm just doing the math in my head, which is always changing, but, so I just want to make sure that there's consent to the extent that this, the decision process may take up six, two days, there's no objection to that?
If the hearing is still open, I don't think that the six, two days starts to run slow on that.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to carry this hearing over to January 3rd, Board of Trustees. Is there a second?
Second, I'm a motion.
All in favor? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, extensions? Good, thank you everybody for coming, I really appreciate it. We will gather more information, if you have further comments or there are people who aren't able to show up tonight, please feel free to have them reach out to us and share their comments via email or phone call. Okay? That's for both, that's for everybody involved.
Next public hearing is on proposed local law act 2021, entitled fee for cancellation of inspection appointments. I should be more succinct, it's a fee for no bonus of cancellation of inspection appointments.
Just for everybody's context, this was an idea that was brought up, we've been dealing with more, I call them ghost appointments, where contractors are scheduling appointments with our inspection staff and then not appearing at those inspections. We are trying to, I think, encourage people to make sure they follow through on their appointments or at least alert the staff with at least an hour's notice that they, that they're not going to make it, so that we can more effectively use our staff's time and not have them standing at a work site or other site. So I think we talked about a minimum fee, the proposal is $50, I think.
$50.
So, interested in getting public feedback on it, I don't know, board, well, let's start with the board, any questions or comments before we get started?
I guess from this perspective, it'll allow additional inspections to occur, because if we get timely cancellations, our building inspection department can now do other inspections that might have been laid out later, correct?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Or take care of paperwork and free up time to, you know, then take care of those inspections. So, yes. Anybody else? Alright, I'll open it up to the public, are there any comments or questions from the public on this proposed local law?
50 sounds too low.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Is that on the record or off?
Mac Carstens, 125 Northwood Road. Yeah, 50 sounds too low, I don't know what the hourly wage is, but 50.
Recoup the salary of the estimated salary.
An hour, whatever, two hours.
We don't want to be that punitive, we just want, you know, once it happens, once we'll let them do it again.
We'll see.
We hope.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mitchell Love Schwartz, which is Rich Strut 1, I'll second.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add, I mean, it's discretionary too, if something occurs where they, you know, they got caught in traffic or something like that, we're not looking, you know, to, you know.
Or an emergency, right?
You know, there's going to be, if there's explanation, again, we just want to, you know, say that our time is valuable as a stretch.
Yeah, I think what it does is it's more of a deterrent, I mean, people, they're going to realize that if I don't show up, I'm going to possibly 50 bucks.
I hope you never have to do it, if anyone just.
And we know, it's not that yet.
Parents now that, you know, they do that, and then everybody knows that that's going towards that, that they have to, you know, follow that.
Thank you, Peter. Alright, seeing that there's no further public comments, no questions from the board, I think this is our second month, so we should hold this over for one more month.
The first hearing.
A first hearing, sorry, that's right. We voted on the hearing last month, so, so we'll hold this one, I'll make a motion to hold this over for another month.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye, opposed, extensions, none? Alright, and then the next hearing, rental registration. You want to just give a quick overview, Ronnie?
Okay, so, we've had some discussions about, there are a few rented properties in the village, and we have no idea who lives there, we have no idea whether the landlord is providing a safe space, if they are shop inspectors, if they're public, if they're not, if they're inspectors, if there are occupants. Basically, we're following suit of pretty much every other village, and that's what we have to require a rental registration. What it would entail is that somebody works to rent their property, their real estate agent would have to file a registration form that would enable us to have the property inspected before it's occupied, looking again for safety features, looking for, making sure there's no rodent issue. Upon change in tenant, again, an inspection would be required, very nominal fee, just to cover the paperwork and the, you know, the time that we would be required to administer the program. I base this, I base this law, I believe, also of Sam's Point and Kings Point's law, very typical in our communities.
And Ronnie, I think we also talked about putting a minimum rental period in place too?
Yes, and since we're enacting the code on rental registration, the issue for a lot of people are these Airbnb rentals, so they would need to, this law would require a minimum rental of, I believe it's, I don't know.
90, I think you had 90 days of here.
90.
Right?
90 days.
90, no less than 90 day rental. You know, eliminate that one of Airbnb.
Alright, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board this time? If not, we'll open it up to the public. Alright, anybody from the public? Please join us.
Aaron, the Airbnb, tell me, do you get these up in your brain?
I'm sorry, 57?
Do you like it? I really am opposed to this, and I'll tell you why. My feeling is that it's my property, I pay taxes, if I want to Airbnb it for less than 90 days, I should have the right to be able to do it. And I just feel like it's a law, a law coming down into my property, making that determination, and I really resent that. The other thing I resent is that section B on your, which you put on the website, you wrote it was 175 14 on page seven, which was a typo and that you stuck it at the back of the page, close to the front of it, but it says that if, if I'm having financial hardship and I, and I need to rent my property out, I have to come in front of. I have to come in front of you guys and beg for that. It says in the section.
I don't see the word beg.
Well, it says in the event that the section...
Does it say beg?
Causes a severe and substantial financial hardship to any property, the applicant may be made in writing to the board trustee requesting an exemption from the provision of the sanction.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say beg.
Okay, so I come to, I have any financial problems, I'm coming to you for that exception. I'm telling you I have a financial problem, and I'm asking your permission if I can then rent my property out. Again, it's a long arm of the law coming down into my property, and I speak on behalf of myself and my husband. I mean, if we live in Stone Hill, and we were in a gated community, and everyone's paying a maintenance fee, and there's a board that comes together and makes that decision collectively, I get it. But we, my husband and I made a decision not to live in Stone Hill. We want to live in Flower Hill and have our property around us. Now, you have said that in your, on your notes, that it was a rodent problem and it was a safety issue. And if we have one-off, we don't have any zoning in that whole Flower Hill. We know Kings Point might have, other communities might have.
You can address the board.
The, it was when, you had said that when your summary was, in that other communities have this in place. But what I'm saying is that Flower Hill doesn't have this. I believe that the garden apartments are commercial, they're not part of residential, maybe they were renovated in. But we don't have this issue, so if you go in...
We don't have, I'm sorry, which issue is that?
The garden apartments that are on...
Yeah.
No, but what issue?
But what issue don't we have?
And then if there's, that we don't have zoning in Atterflower Hill, we don't have a multi-dwelling zoning. This, this whole agenda that was put up on the, on the website talks about multiple dwelling, and I don't really understand where this is all coming from. I mean, you don't have any multiple dwellings in Flower Hill.
Okay.
I mean, there are a few mother-daughter apartments. There were what, a few mother-daughter, uh, have. Mother-daughter, but this whole law here is written for multiple dwellings.
Well, thank you for that input. I think we'll take a...
I'm sorry?
I said, thank you for the input, and so we'll take a look at it. I think if we need to clarify it, we will.
I mean, there's seven pages here, and there's only one section that deals with this, is all about multiple dwellings. And in all of Hill with one small section, and then that small section says that you can only rent for 90 days minimally. And what I'm saying is that if I want to rent my house for a week, or a term, it's my house.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, of course.
So you pay taxes, you say you pay taxes, you know, what, do your neighbors pay taxes?
Everybody pays taxes.
So how would your neighbors feel if you were renting out your house every week?
We have those buildings.
How would you feel if your neighbor's renting out their house to an Airbnb and has a turnover every week of new people?
You know what?
And you can't control what they do in the backyard, or whether they party, or...
I disagree with that, sir, I disagree with that, because we do have laws in the village of Flower Hill that curtail people from having large parties in the back of their house, in certain houses.
We don't have those laws.
You have to have permission from the village of Flower Hill to have a party.
Thank you.
Ronnie, you made, you've made me get applications for that multiple times.
You needed that, but you need a permit for ten.
You need a permit, yeah.
Depending on the infrastructure that's in place.
And if they're allowed parties, the police are called, and they come, and they break it up. We all have children that have grown up and, my kids have all grown up and gone, but parties are covered in the back of houses all the time.
So if your neighbor, every week, has a new group of people living there, and they abide by the rules, they are outside being allowed till 10 o'clock at night, which you're allowed to do, and having parties which fall, you would have no problem with that?
I would go to the owner of the house and have a conversation with the owner of the house.
But the owner's gonna say, well, you just told us, it's my house, I can do whatever you want.
Trustee Janice.
Janice.
Janice. You can argue all you want about that, because that's their property, and we have the village here to help us. We have a code enforcer. How much do we pay the code enforcer? If there's an issue, the code enforcer can go and deal with it. Is that not true? What's the point of the code enforcer if not to enforce it?
Your argument makes no sense, by the way.
My argument makes no sense?
I asked you a question, you didn't answer it. I asked you a question, how would you feel? You would go to the owner, and the owner would say to you, it's my property, I can do what I want. What would your response be?
And if there's, if the person was having a party that was going past...
What if they were going past? What if they were conforming with all the laws, but every night they had a party? And then the following week, a new family moves in, and they have parties, and then you get a bunch of college kids who rent the house, and they have parties. How would you feel?
I would actually go to the police, because...
And what would the police tell you? They're, they're abiding by the rules of the village. So your argument has no substance, as far as I'm concerned.
And what about my argument that it's my property and I can do what I want?
I'm asking you the question, I don't know if you're understanding why I asked you.
No, I do understand, but I'm asking you, you live in Flower Hill.
You can't, just because you own property, doesn't mean you can do whatever you want. There are rules, okay?
I agree with you.
You have to follow the rules.
And you have to have nick, you have to...
Can I finish, please?
Of course.
If this becomes a rule, you will have to abide by this rule, like they're not. Because even though people pay taxes and own property, I can't do something on my property that's not conforming with the rule, because I say, I don't care, it's my property, I can do whatever I want.
I agree with you.
If the village implements a law that says I can't do something, I can't do it. Do you understand me?
Of course I understand that. I've been living in this village a very long time, probably longer than you.
I'm not sure that...
Probably longer than you. And, and, and my point is that I do pay my taxes, and I don't like your law coming into my property.
Okay. Thank you both, I appreciate it. Anybody else from the public want to comment on the proposed local law? Any more board questions or comments?
I don't, I don't live in Flower Hill, but Eric, can you say?
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name is Michael Coosie, C.O.L.A., M.R.S.I.
Can you give us your address, too?
28 Coles Drive, Rocky Point, New York. We live in a prime neighborhood, 52 homes. Half the homes on the block, half the homes on the other side of the block. A lot of the homes had problems with open arenas we had, property got old, some houses fell in the water, and had a bunch of people bought houses, a lot of them came from the city. And we've had about five different Airbnbs over the last year and a half. Our neighborhood is completely jammed. We're talking dune buggies on the beach at Lea. We're talking parties every weekend, and how it's affected my life as a neighbor is devastating. And there's nothing I can do about it, because we have a board that's consisting of five people that moved in and have their Airbnbs. And totally devastating in my neighborhood in terms of what people say, but on the beach, they're like...
All right.
So what you're doing is actually helping all the other neighbors, it's giving some control. And without any control, it's out of control. So it's, to me, it's fair, and that's just my opinion.
Thank you for your, appreciate it.
And it's not, it's not, it's not one.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
I have one.
Go ahead.
I mean, has there been an issue that I'm not aware of that this is trying to address?
So one of the issues that came up is when, over on Ridge Drive with the rodent issue, one of the properties is a rental property, where the rodents are living. So we're working cooperatively with the property owners to address the issue. But I think one thing exposed is it'd be a lot easier to ensure what is going on there if we ensure that there's annual extermination or extermiter inspections on rental properties, because there may not be a lot of incentivization there for a rental property owner versus somebody who lives there every day. And we can use and leverage the rental permit each year to make sure that any issues that come up with the property are addressed, given that the landlord is not going to be living there.
No, that's helpful, thank you.
And also, perfect.
You know, it's way deeper than that.
Yep.
I just wanted to put a few other, a few other cases to point why I think this is something that's needed. We've had, we have homes, one or two homes in the village that are illegally renting apartments. You know, we'd be able to get a handle on that and, you know, crack down on them. And the other thing is that we don't know who's living in these, you know, in a rental. When we have an emergency notification go out, they're totally missing it, because we don't know who's there.
Because it would go to the homeowner, who might be living in California, not the person who's living in that house. Also, from a safety perspective, this ensures that there'll be, you said earlier, but it'll ensure that there's working smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, whereas that might not be the case, someone moves in, they might not care about that, but this guarantees that. I also think we're gonna need to look at this, Ronnie and I talked about this last week, and my apology for not sending you guys these notes. We're asking the, it's a little bit of a problem with the mechanics, because we're asking for the house to get a permit before the broker lists it. But then we have to make sure that once somebody rents the apartment, rents the house, that that is updated. So we just have to make sure that the, that the mechanism works properly. Because in essence, it'll be the same permit, but they're gonna have to come to the village twice, once for the permit for the broker to rent it, and then it has to be updated with the renter once that happens. So we, I think some of the verbiage here needs to be cleaned up, but maybe I'm just incorrect. So we just have to make sure the mechanism works.
Yeah, and since this is the first reading, if anybody wants to go through, and please let me know if you spot anything.
Yep.
You know, like this task, I think there was that with this numbering, and I'll, I'll check that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure it's easy for people to comply with this, that's all.
Is there anything here about background checks on the tenants, or understanding exactly who the tenant is or someone?
I think that's kind of the real, and the homeowners concerned, you know, they'd be able to pay the rent.
No interest.
Yeah, I would want to do that.
I think the Airbnb thing is the big question. I mean, if, seriously.
Especially with beautiful houses that have a pool.
Let me finish, Ronnie.
Hello, Ron.
Ronnie, let me finish. I think if you, you know, consider, you know, when my son got married, and he and his friends rented a house in Austin, Texas. I certainly wouldn't want to have a bachelor party and have that house that has that beautiful pool and outdoor fire pit and is very, you know, renting cheaply. I would not. You don't move to Flower Hill, you assume that's not gonna happen to you. Things have changed, Airbnb is now something that maybe wasn't really that popular five to 10 years ago. We need to update our laws to keep the quality of the neighborhood that people initially fought for. And by allowing short-term rent, I don't know, what planet, seriously? To think that that's not gonna matter.
I don't, I don't think it's a, look, no one is sitting around right now in the Midwest going, hey, where do you want to go on vacation? Hey, let's go to Flower Hill with my house. I mean, you know, it's probably, it's probably not something that would happen a lot, but you're right, you can't control, and even if, even if they...
I'm just using as an example.
Even if they fall within the parameters of the law.
Family reunions. A different family, I'm not saying that, but just use that.
Absolutely, well, I wouldn't want that next to me.
Would you want the family reunion house next to you?
No, when you have sporting events, like the Rodney Cup, a few years, you want people all the way around the year.
Yeah, if I have a, if I have a professional PGA golf guy renting a house, that's fine.
But what I'd also say to the public that may watch this video, or is, you know, may be listening now, like we've set a time, we suggested a time of 90 days. If for some reason people disagree with that, you know, let us know, give us feedback. Should it be 12 months? Should it be one month? I don't know. I think we've picked what we think is a relatively good timeframe to ensure we're not dealing with constant turnover that could cause problems versus allowing people to long-term rent. So I think everyone's bringing up good examples of situations that we know other communities have had to deal with that I think we all, in talking to the residents, know they don't want to deal with. So if there's additional feedback, we can go from there.
I just wanted to point that in other villages, people were doing Airbnb, and a lot of the larger, larger houses they were using for party houses, for weekend houses. And the view was, for Airbnbs, this is a new thing, they viewed it as, and they put it in the category of you're using your house as a business.
Yeah.
It's, it's a business use, it's like you're renting a hotel room and your house. So it was on that, on that notion that they limited, you know, the timeframe, that rentals could be a normal rental. We all know what rental is, usually, you know, year rental.
Didn't Brookfield do that, or somebody did that, I read somewhere, that they did it? They based it on that you become a commercial landlord, or you become a, a...
Hotel?
Yeah, hotel, but they used a different word.
It's a difference, you're making, you're making money off your property in these short-term rentals, and that's how it was viewed, and we put in that category.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And the code also includes the definition of what a single-family dwelling would be. So, while it's not people who are related by blood, but it has to be a single-family dwelling, people are living, like, if you will, in terms of as a family unit. So that is something that would be, it doesn't go away. It's already there, and the village would have that power as well.
All right, so we're gonna keep this rolling, gonna make a motion to hold this here.
One more thing, I just want to let you know that plans on the civil connect with the Airbnb ban as well.
And so I will make a motion to hold this public hearing over till the January 3rd meeting of the Board of Trustees. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Dorfman seconded. And all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? All right, this is held over. All right, the final one. Amen property maintenance for hidden unsecured ladders. Ronnie or Randall, which one of you wants to just give the quick overview?
I'll gladly take this one. Chance to look at it. I took pictures of just recently multiple dwellings that have ladders out, like up against a house, or ladders that are just leaning, you know, on the ground, easily accessible. Concern is twofold, one for safety of our children. A ladder leaning up against a house is a very attractive nuisance. Some kid might climb it, fall, get injured, that'd be a problem. Secondarily, ladders, and I sent you guys the article about it, from my days in the security business, home security business. You know, people always say, you know, in order to cut down crime, turn on the lights when you leave, good lights outside, trim the bushes around your home. Additionally, one of the things that's always been noted is ladders. An unsecured ladder can easily be used by a criminal from property X, carry it over to next-door property Y, break it into a second-floor window. So the reason this local law is needed is for safety and to keep crime down. The pictures I took here are not ladders that were up just during the day. I took these pictures on weekends, actually. Yep, all these pictures were taken on weekends. So this is all easily accessible ladders that, you know, if they're not locked, they're leaning against a house, bad things can happen, so.
Randall, Ronnie, help me out here, would this, this one, wouldn't just apply to homeowners, but construction sites as well, correct?
Oh, anything, any, any, any kind of ladder, yes. Some of these are from construction sites, and some of these are from, and these, the picture of the construction site was one without a fence. So that's the one here, the one in the garage is just sitting right there, a non-fenced property.
And just so you know, in the town of North Hempstead, all of those would be violations, that would be, that would be fineable.
I mean, the goal is to give more...
Ladder, unsecured ladders, unsecured construction sites, in the town of North Hempstead, they would all be fineable.
The goal is to give them a warning, hopefully they'll take the ladder down and a violation subsequently. It's not meant to be a police statement, everyone gets a ticket, but these are ladders that have been out for weeks, some weeks, some even longer.
All right, any questions or comments from the board? Any question, or questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much. We will hold this, I'll make a motion to hold this hearing over till the January 3rd meeting. Any, a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Lewandowski seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions? All right, motion passes.
Can I have a motion to close the public hearing portion of the meeting?
I will make that motion.
And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, and thank you.
Any abstentions? All right. You're done.
You're done.
Thank you for coming and sticking with us here. All right, let's see what we got here.
Regular meeting.
Well, hold on, sir, are you here for a particular issue?
Yeah, actually, I have the sign for 10:45 Northern Boulevard.
Okay, so let's go over the sign for 10:45 Northern Boulevard.
Yeah, my impression is that the sign was originally approved as it was shown, and that now there's a question because it has to pause, the interpretation that a pause on...
Who are you in relation to the property?
I'm the manufacturer of the sign.
Oh, thank you, okay.
Hey, Michael, so, yes, this came up the last meeting, it was approved by Architectural Review, but was before the board for final approval, and questions came up and concerns just on...
The interpretation that are being...
Well, there was a legal interpretation around it, and I think there were just concerns about the overall aesthetics of it and the potential to maybe have, have it altered. Gary, do you want to, I know you, we're talking about reaching out to the homeowner, or the homeowner, the property owner, so...
The owner came to me, you know, probably four or five months ago, told me he just wanted a basic sign for the building, sort of building, building has some architectural details to it. He's got multiple tenants going in there, but he only currently, I believe, has two, something, or maybe three, I'm not sure. I just made the rendering, and we started talking, and we kept it based, I understand what you're saying. I think, you know, and the order basically told me, like, whatever you gotta do.
So can I, can I suggest this, then, maybe, Gary, is this something you want to do here? Or maybe you guys can huddle up for 10 minutes and just talk about the concerns?
Yeah, that's fine.
Could we do that, and then this way, you'll save everybody some time?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So... So we got a bunch of stuff on the meeting. I don't want him to step away. Well.
We can, let's jump around.
We'll jump around a little bit, Gary, so we won't take any votes.
Go next.
And why don't you sit with him and see if maybe we can iron it?
We do.
There's a football game.
Yeah.
There is?
The Bills are.
Oh, sorry. Yeah. I'm a Jets fan. I didn't even know football was still going on.
It's not. I didn't listen.
All right. So where can we go here? So, okay, why don't we go to Public Works? Because we're gonna have to take a vote on the finance stuff, so I want Gary to be here for that. So Rich, go ahead.
Speed hump. I guess we've gotten good comments on the speed hump. A lot of people were actually, were actually good, you know, they actually liked it.
Thank you.
I'm surprised because, I mean, when we were actually doing it on, there was some trucks that were going through there and taking some noise. I guess.
So.
Only problem is it just takes a long time.
So Rich, I spoke, I didn't, and my apologies for not emailing you. I spoke to the manufacturer. They sent us longer lag bolts than, because that's the only thing they had, because the whole. Their shorter ones, they recommended the shorter ones. They've been out of stock for eons and they're hoping with this whole supply chain issue that. But also we'll need the anchors, the shorter anchors. Because I told him how long it took him to do it. And he goes, yeah. He goes, my bad. It's the only thing we have with the long anchors and the long lag bolts. He's like, when they get it in, he will send us a replacement quantity. So we'll use the shorter ones, which means a lot less drilling time. We won't burn that bit out like you already did quickly. And he said it'll, for our type of use, because he saw, I showed him pictures, he said, it'll be fine with shorter anchors. So at least for our next run with our next speed humps, it'll take you guys a lot less time because you'll only drill, what were these, six inch or eight inch? I think the replacements are four inch. He said you'll be able to drill them so much faster. So hopefully that'll speed things up. I'll keep you in the loop on, I'll tell him to send it to us again. If I ever get a notification, I'll let you know when it's big ship. But he said it's probably after the winter because there's such a supply chain issue with it, but they just don't have.
Okay. So everybody, there's a letter in the packet we already got from one resident thanking us for, for this. Thank you to Rich and his crew for the, it took the entire day to, to get it installed because it's six separate pieces, right? Six or no, eight, sorry.
Two, three, six, yeah, eight.
Eight. So I think it was smart to just tackle one right now. Let's figure out the, the hiccups along the way. But, you know, we had residents standing there cheering us on, I guess, Mr. Anderson was. And Randall, you said you had somebody stop actually and go, can you put one by our house?
Yes, that was someone else who lives down on Rich Drive. And one of the other residents drove by and gave Rich a thumbs up and says, she said, thank you.
So.
I was very excited.
Much appreciated. We have two more. Do, we're gonna take them up when it snows. I think what we'll do is kind of, let's watch the weather. We may hold off on deploying the other two, I think, until.
We should wait till the spring.
Before, before we start laying them down. So continue to see how this one works. We'll, over the winter, identify the two other locations. I think we'll look maybe on.
We've got lots of choices.
Potentially, yeah. We'll look at, we're gonna go back to the traffic study and identify those other two spots. So good feedback on that one. So thank you. Snow readiness? How we doing?
Snow, obviously Wednesday, they're calling for something. It doesn't look like much, but whatever it is. Whatever does come looking ready for it, but that, that hump right there shouldn't be a problem, I guess, for this storm coming on Wednesday. Obviously, when we know it's gonna be four or five, something that's plowable, I guess, then we'll, you know, I guess.
Then we'll pull it up. And then keep it up until snow stops.
Did the snow emergency signs go on Rich Wednesday?
That's, that's my next.
Okay, because I have, I have a letter to the business owners telling them.
We have two of them. Are they gonna go, are we putting them on both sides basically?
Rich, you need to put them wherever you don't think the truck is gonna fit, you know? If you need them on both sides, put them up on both sides.
There's no way any truck can make it down this.
Then, then put them up on both sides. Right? And if we need to get more of them, let's get more of them because, you know, we don't want to end up in a situation where we can't plow, plow the area. Right?
So that, we're pretty good.
Okay.
We're very thrilled whatever does come on Wednesday.
All right.
I'm hung up on the trucks that are already getting ready to go.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the Stony Town Road water seepage issue. You guys were out playing today, huh?
So we dug the test pit right basically three feet off of where there's an existing hole right now that water is coming. It appears flowing water out of the ground.
So actually, hold on, let me correct. It's actually Manhasset Woods Road.
Manhasset Woods at Stony.
That, it's so, where Stony Town, Manhasset Woods Road meet, just up Manhasset Woods Road on the east side, by that electrical box. Keep going, sorry.
So there's an existing hole right now with a cone in it. You can clearly see movement of water. We go two feet south of it, dig a hole, no water. If it was groundwater, it'd be in both locations. So I think they hit a line when they were putting that box in.
Can you guys tell whose line is closest or might be right there or?
The problem is Ronnie had one issue, so they've asked him to build one for us.
So are those two test pits still open there?
No.
No, you closed them back up?
There's one that's open with a cone on it.
Okay, there's one that's open, that's where the water's flowing up from.
Yeah.
All right. So can you all, can you reach back out to the water district?
Yeah, I'm sorry to go back now.
You can see the watermark is right by, you know, that cone with the water on it.
Okay.
That's where I got them there and I'll meet them. Because last time it was just, it was just them that.
Yeah.
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 They just showed up and said.
I want them there with, with Rich.
I'd rather see them excavate that so I can see for myself.
Yeah.
Because there is a water, there is two water pipes going through there. So.
Okay. All right, let's get them back out there. Where can we go here?
Here, sir.
Uh. What's going on? Quick question, Rich. What's going on with the house on Stony Town that had the landslide?
Okay, that's tomorrow. So I know Peter and Jeff will put together a letter because we've notified them multiple times for issues with both the neighbor on Knowles as well as Stony Town. So they'll be getting another letter tomorrow to provide us with the information we've been requesting now for a few months.
So there's, right, there's the two issues there is there's the open area from the landslide and then the second issue is the retaining wall behind the house on Stony Town. So Peter, and the property on Knowles, you spoke to that property owner last week. And he was gonna get you some, he was gonna get to work on the plans and stuff like that, I think you said, correct?
Yes.
And then any other input other than what Steve just gave for the other property owner?
Well, they're gonna be getting that letter. I think we're gonna, we're gonna reach out directly to the engineer. I'll reach out to Bob again tomorrow just to inform him of this letter.
Yep. And then we're gonna send them another letter informing them that we want immediate action to certify the retaining wall behind the house. And if they don't take action in the next seven days, we're going to evaluate our ability to shut down or eliminate their use of their backyard and do whatever other actions we think necessary until we get proper safety certification.
And that, right, it would, to restrict use of the property and then the, the additional features that right now, I think both properties have since received notices of violation, returnable in village justice court. So one homeowner was present last month and I think they're both going to be returnable this month. So if I'm not incorrect, but I'm pretty sure that each was issued a violation.
Yeah, I know, I know the seven Knowles would know that they were for this month.
Okay, then vote, then definitely vote.
All right.
While we're on Stony Town, are we gonna patch that pothole that's kind of between Manhasset Woods and Fort Washington Boulevard?
Weird.
There's a, it's been there for a long time. It's getting worse. It's like a.
Manhasset Woods and Fort Washington Boulevard?
Yeah, between Manhasset Woods and Fort, there's a string of kind of holes.
On stone?
Yeah, I hit them every day when I drive to work.
There's some, yeah, I think on, on actual Stony Town road, you.
Yeah.
There's probably a couple of that. I'll take a look at that.
Yeah, take a look.
All right. Let's go to the attorney's report.
So I'll start with the second, first section, which is the exit out of the council who's representing the village and have asked that he forward a summary as soon as I receive an update from him. I'll share that with the board. I also reached out to the board and to ask for some consultation from him regarding additional issues, which I'll have a report to the board on as soon as, as he sends it. And with respect to the board zoning decisions, I've sent to the board a review and the report seemed fairly long, but actually most were adjourned from last month. There were only two that liked the decision. And both of them were approved. The one on Sixth East High that was approved had had prior variance. But the, the board under review felt that these were not anything that was exceeding the criteria applicable and did grant the variance application. What they were essentially seeking was to exceed the maximum floor area. There was a neighbor who appeared to have no objection as well. And with respect to the second, as you, as you'll see, the concerns that the board had really dealt with how close two of the proposed structures were to property lines. One of the, the structures, a retaining wall would have been right on the property line. And the second, a patio rather close to it, about a foot away. The board felt that it was appropriate to grant the variance, but to modify the setbacks. So that the wall will be actually no closer than, I think it was two feet away and the patio will come back about three feet from the lot line. One of the things that was pointed out by Mr. Obensky to the applicant was that for the retaining wall to be on the lot line really can't happen because the retaining wall is gonna have puddings and things that would have gone over into the neighbor's property, no matter how you look at it. And it was a situation in which the applicant was comfortable with that modification. The board was comfortable with granting them those changes and that's what they did. And that's my report. Unless Mr. Obensky had other thoughts. I don't, he said it perfectly.
All right, anything else for our attorney? Okay.
Hey, Brian. I just want to go back to one thing.
Yes.
With respect to the paving contract from last year.
The paving contract?
Paving contract.
Yes.
So America's completed the punch list.
Okay.
With the exception of three ponding issues that he's claiming are not issues and that he did not create. One I'll give it to him is a flat section of Greenbrier and Hewlett. There is some ponding. I don't believe he's created that. It's a flat area. However, he has created some issues on Birchdale and Woodland Road.
Okay.
We used to have a somewhat of a transverse gutter in the existing asphalt at that intersection. It was brought to his attention when he was paving that that existed and he was to put it back. He paved right over. So there is still some ponding.
Do we have any outs? Well, okay.
There's also another small section of ponding by the village of the judge's ass. Get on, what is that, Seven Greenway? Is that, I think that's his house. That's another flat area. There is a catch basin right across from him. They may be able to heat it up a little bit to get the water across. I think it's gonna do more damage than good, to be honest. But I don't know how far we wanna, you know.
All right, so I'd say.
How much are you catering to with it?
Well, hold on.
We have 15,000 on retention. I probably have about another 40,000 that I held back from his requisition number three.
So let's talk offline. I want to talk about a strategy to get these issues addressed.
Just to get them addressing it.
Yep.
Sorry.
Yeah. And if we need to take further action, we will, you know? This has been a challenging paving season and it is what it is. I think we've documented everything we need to and we'll take any appropriate action we need to to get the roads finished and recoup any, any cost to us along the way.
It's because that Birchdale and Woodland ponding is not good at all. It's, 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 on the rainy days, it's bad.
Yeah.
I'm surprised Frank hasn't complained about it. It's right by your house, Frank. Exactly.
All right. Thank you for calling that out. All right, I'll give my update real quick. We got through the first phase of the commission of Nassau County. They all expressed support for transferring the road to the village. It was going to, it was going to.
Yes, yeah, they have a schedule of meetings that the planning boards, so what happened? The first is, the first meeting was a committee of the planning of Northern County planning, the open space committee.
Open space, that was the.
And it passed through there. And now it goes before the full planning board. Okay, you're in.
Yeah, it's open space. So we have the December 8th meeting coming up, open space foundation. And then it's brought back to Nassau County Planning Commission. But those dates are messed up. We gotta follow up on those dates because I think they're reversed.
The consensus that, of the members that I heard, everyone was like, very happy to hear this.
Yeah, we haven't heard a negative comment or anybody in support of the county keeping it. So once it finishes the commission, it will move on to, I think, the full legislature and our fingers crossed there. Okay, the other thing is we included here an update to our COVID policy. Wanted to, right, just, and I'd say the situation has changed again with Omicron, but we wanted to update the COVID policy to make it clear. Unvaccinated individuals and individuals who vaccinated status is unknown shall be required to wear a face mask if they can medically tolerate it. Masking is optional for that, for those that show proof of vaccination. Meeting rooms will be configured so the chairs and spaces are spaced out to comply with recommended minimum social distance. Given the individual's vaccination status, meeting rooms will be thoroughly cleaned before and after each meeting and public hearing. And then whatever feasible during meetings, windows shall be open to allow it for increased fresh airflow. So we're just trying to set some standards. I think the one thing we want to add to this is that especially given new variants kind of pop up, give the mayor the ability to update this policy in between board meetings. And then at that point of the board meeting, we can update everybody and if there's changes we want to make, we can do that. But just given that the situation still is, is kind of changing, we wanted to make clear what our policies were in the village, in the village property. And just update them to kind of where we were today. Any questions or comments about that?
So, so it's the same, right? So, but, so, but if you're vaccinated, you don't have to wear a mask?
Correct.
So, but except for this meeting?
Um, no. So our, actually no, that's the update to our policy is with vaccine, our policy has been masks. You always need to wear a mask. Now we're saying if you're vaccinated, you can choose not to wear a mask.
Okay, so we don't have to wear a mask now?
Once we, once we adopt this policy, if you want to take your mask off, you can take it off. So, yeah, sorry.
Can we do a waiver just for Mary Jo?
But, right, this was, questions were coming up, the situation got better, we started taking off our masks. Then the situation, the case level went up and we started putting our masks on again. I think we're just trying to create some consistency, be consistent with the vaccination status standards. And then if the situation changes in between meetings, at least we can reset the policy until the next board meeting. Sound good?
Yeah.
All right. So the policy will be exactly as stated here, plus the mayor will have the ability to update the policy in between board meetings as, as needed.
Mary Jo should make the motion.
All right. I will make, well, anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make.
Is there a second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right, if you want to take your mask off, feel free. If you're vaccinated, please show proof of vaccination. Okay, that's COVID. We have Gary back. So let's go to the treasurer's report.
Approval of minutes.
Let's do the treasurer's report first. All right, everybody has the claims in their packet. Everybody's had a chance to review. Suzanne, any special callouts for this month? Board members, any other comments or questions on the claims?
I already asked my questions and they were thoroughly answered, so.
There is one I do want to call out actually. Stanley Spielman? Jeff, can you just comment on that payment and the need for it?
Yes.
To the extent you can?
Sure. He has been asking for reimbursement for certain portions of insurance. Karma, right. Well, this, this, this is an adjustment based upon the amount of income that he has per year. In prior years, that had not been something that was the village's obligation.
Jeff, hold on one second. So Stan, just for context, Stanley Spielman, I don't know if everybody remembers this, is the husband to a former employee.
Right.
So there's benefits he gets from the village because this predates the change in the village policy around benefits. So there's benefits he gets from the village because this predates the change in the village policy around benefits for employees.
Mayor, no, he is not entitled to insurance per se, but he elected to continue his coverage as an employee.
Thank you. It's a benefit, though.
Yes.
He pays for it.
He pays for it.
So go ahead, continue with the statement, sorry.
So in prior years, the vote was not obligated to pay that adjustment based upon the amount of income that he had coming in per year. That was then changed through the state of New York. He pointed that out. We went back and forth for quite some time confirming it and he was correct that he was owed that money. I met with him a number of times, confirmed the amount that he was owed, and that is why that amount appears before you tonight. And I can confirm it's correct. We checked it against his income, against the amount that IMRA would be each year that he was claiming. And we've confirmed the numbers.
What's the amount? Sorry, I just.
I think the total is roughly.
I know it's in here, I just.
It's now about $2,000, but the total, the total was about $4,000. That's actually the difference between what the village paid him before.
Right.
And what he paid the difference with IMRA.
It was from 2017 through 2020.
Right, so it essentially covered a four-year period.
And so this payment is $2,658.
And then we're done.
We're done.
Well, there is, there is an additional, there's an additional concern that he's raising that I will put together in a memo for the board right away. But this issue would be.
Done for now. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the claims.
I'll second.
All those in favor? All those opposed, extensions? All right, everybody in favor? Thank you. ARC report?
ARC report. There were five items before us. Kate Petrie Lane is a rear carved porch to that and swim spa. We had some comments on the roof, which we have to come back with. All the members that they did what we proposed and that approved with that condition. 24 Birchdale, rear edition portico exterior alterations. We had another number of comments. I've actually gotten those comments back exactly as we requested. So I'm requesting that be approved with those conditions being that. 12 Wood Valley, addition exterior alterations. We had a number of comments there. There was a lot of quickie pulling and roofline changes, I think we had also. So we've asked them to come back for the next meeting. We had two that came from the zoning. One that was mentioned, Six East High, retainable pool and patio. You know, although there were comments that the wall was high and the zoning proved it, so your ARC has to follow that. So that was, that's approved for your approval. 35 Birchdale, they're kind of in the middle of the zoning. They haven't, they haven't gone back to zoning, but they were given a direction, which is what the plan that they presented to ARC. You know, ARC, I think in general, I think some of the members thought that the direction was still very lenient on the zoning board, but again, hasn't been finalized. But they came before us knowing that they still have to go back to zoning. We had some comments about drainage and a more complete landscape plan.
Okay.
So that's, that's going to be turned for the next meeting, which will be after zoning.
Okay.
And that will be ARC.
Thank you. Any comments on the architecture review committee report?
Can I have a motion approving the findings of the architecture review report?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, might just frankly make that motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, trustee Janice. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we need to address?
I'm sorry.
Do we need to address the sign for the gentleman who came in?
So we can do that after we approve the report.
Okay, I thought that might be an admission from the report.
It's not on there.
I thought it was an admission.
No, extensions are.
Any opposition, extensions? No? Okay. Gary, you want to update us on the sign conversation? Is it to be continued?
I, yeah, we should, we should continue the conversation.
Okay. Okay, no action on that one. Ronnie, administrator's report?
Okay, so I put in the back end the calendar of meetings for 2022 and I just wondered to make sure that everybody's okay with that and.
I'm not okay. I don't like the Fourth of July.
Sorry. I'm sure John Walter would have some comments about that.
And New Year's Day, I'm serious.
Yeah, so that's the meeting calendar and the holidays. Just to split the board now, we have a new holiday this year, June 10. So yay for us, goofy gift.
It's on the 20th. Is that an extra day off?
Fair enough.
You could.
So if you have a motion of adjusting that meeting calendar.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Any opposed, extensions? None.
All right, great. Next is our annual court order resolution. I thought we had done it, but I was mistaken. We did receive the order from courts from our orders, we want to deliver that report. However, the court is required to resolution. So it's in your packet, you can read it. It's basically saying that, yeah, the court's in order. Okay. If anybody has any questions about it, I'm going to have to answer it. If not, I'll screw resolution. Uh, no motion to oral. Okay, we will make this resolution.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second?
I'll second. Since no one else wants to second anything.
All in favor?
I'm spreading it in.
Any opposition?
I just want to get.
Any extension? Sorry. Election overview and dates, Ronnie?
Okay, so the first notice of election was published on November 10. And basically, we have running for office at the general election on March 15th. Is one mayor position for two years and three trustee positions, and those are two years each. The next date, who might have? Okay, well, the next date that something occurs is petitioning begins on December 28th. Petitions are due back on February 12th, I believe.
Ronnie, why don't we?
I will shoot an email out to everybody just giving you all of the details.
And can you post those dates on, at the front window too? In case, for anybody who's watching, if they want to understand them, they can look it up there. Okay?
Okay, just the legal notices are all on the bulletin board and the entrance of the office if anybody is interested. And of course, I'm free to answer any questions anyone might have.
And just heads up, we're going to have to set a special meeting to set the election inspectors. Due to the timing of the election in between our board meetings, the, right, it's the inspectors. If we were to appoint them in January, we'd have to reappoint them because the inspection timeframe would be, they would expire before the election occurred. If we wait till February, it's going to be too late. So we'll have to do a special meeting just to set that up.
Yeah, so that special meeting will most likely conduct by Zoom on February 3rd. So I'm asking for a motion to hold a special meeting on February 3rd to appoint election inspectors or any of those that may locally come before the board of trustees.
And February 3rd is the first Thursday in February?
Yeah.
So we can do a meeting at a Zoom, a meeting at 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM.
On February 3rd? Any questions, concerns? All right, I'll make a motion to hold that special meeting on February 3rd at 7:00 PM.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Opposed, extensions? Thank you.
We have received one bid for parking consultants for Middle Neck Road parking spaces. I did send that in RFP. There's several other consultants. And that would, the due date on that is, is in sometime in January. And, you know, I'll talk about it or a few later. But I just want to lodge in that, you know, I am looking for other, you know, some more pricing. Make sure that.
Sounds good.
When the right bolt part.
Thank you.
Did you put RFP to Cameron or not?
Cam, I sent Cameron the RFP for the sewers.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because for some reason I got some email that got pulled back from, and it's like, I'm sure it was meant for you.
We've got a lot of RFPs going in. A lot of stuff out there.
Did you send it to Key?
To what?
Key Civil.
Key.
E.
K E Y.
K E Y.
For sewers?
Yeah, that was Mark who came in in the emergency for this. Well, they're civil engineers, yeah.
Okay, sure.
They're very, they're very good. Thank you. We use them all the time.
Sure.
Mark called up.
Ronnie, are we doing anything for the striping?
Yeah, that's the RFP that I was talking about.
That's the parking.
We got one quote from Eschbacker and I just want to, yeah, a couple of others to make sure he, you know, was in the right bolt part.
We're just trying to do our due diligence to get the lowest price possible for the residents of the village. In case, in case people didn't pick up on it while we, while we do all this stuff.
Well, listen, we had a visit from our, our carrier, you know, not our insurance agency, actually, the carrier. And they looked at every different planning in the village and they had no comment. They thought everything was absolutely fine. So that's what we tested into our whole crew and all their farm employees.
Thank you to all of you.
Absolutely happy to meet you and prove who per.
All right.
Before you go on, Ronnie, I'd like to thank you for ensuring that the village is in compliance with Senator Kaplan's open meeting law requirements and that all of our documents have been posted online ahead of the required cutoff.
Thank you. All right, we did attorney, we did mayor's, trustees report. Clary, want to talk about the food drive?
Sure. The food drive is still ongoing, as you're all aware. I just want to thank the things from Smith School. They adopted the village for the food drive this year. Replaced the work bin there. They really did such a fantastic job. They collected so much food that they got, so we did Thanksgiving, they didn't have to wear their uniforms. It was a great party. Took some volunteers to go pick up the food, including Mr. Corbin and his son. It was a great crew and I have to tell you, we took everything to St. Peter's because they had the biggest need. They had requested it, but when we got there, they said, you know, the shelves were almost empty. So it was really, a really nice effort by so many people in the village. So I just wanted to thank them. But we're still taking donations, so happy to pick up, coordinate what we need to do.
Yeah, please, everybody, continue to donate. What I'll also say too is I think we should look at doing something special as trustee Dorpen recommended for Vincent Smith School.
I'm sorry, I'm preparing a proclamation for the school. It'll be great.
And.
Yeah.
What do we think about doing like, I don't know, if they still do it or, you know, what restrictions are, but an ice cream party? Or maybe we can work with the school to kind of do something special and fun for them?
Yeah. I'm sure they would love any.
I'm sorry, but I didn't hear what the.
I said maybe we can do an ice cream party or something for them, you know, give them, even if it's just give them a coupon to Carvel or something or one of the local, local shops. Frozen yogurt, whatever they prefer.
Mel, we'll get Mel over there. Mel will go. We'll call Mel.
With the truck.
Mel.
All right.
I have one quick thing. Rosenthal Fire District had their annual budget meeting. I have a bunch of questions for them because some expenses went up that I wasn't exactly sure what they were. So I'm trying to put together an email to them to get the answers back. But it looks like they're asking for a 4.3% increase for the, for fire protection. Just a couple, most of the items look good, just a couple of things I just wasn't sure.
Wait, that's the BOSEC or for the actual?
Actual fire budget. They had the budget meeting last week, so I'm guessing Port will have theirs pretty soon.
We had.
Oh, there you go.
But I was.
So I want to get some answers before I give you guys a report on some of the anomalies I thought that was there.
Thank you. Gary, the Menhasset Bay Protection Committee, 22 dues, I think?
I'm not sure who's doing that committee.
I filled in.
It's only time after. You know, obviously, generally, the Minnesota protection plan has a budget policy whereby when they send the annual dues statement out, there is a 60-day review period where any member can comment. So they have not raised their dues this year, but if anybody on the board would like to make a comment or, you know, send some kind of a letter to them, this would be the time to do so.
And who is officially taking on the Hempstead Harbor protection?
I am.
So you're official?
Yeah, I'm official now. I think, now that Eric is stepping down.
Yeah, the meetings, the meetings will be much shorter if you retire.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
All right, so Gary's got Hempstead Harbor. Let's circle back on Menhasset. You got Menhasset Bay, Claire, or do we want to start?
Yeah, there was a couple of conflicts that I had in Gary.
That's fine. And listen, that's for everybody who's on a committee. If you have a conflict, just reach out to the board and we'll help each other out here. Okay? All right, so too old business. Ridge Drive.
I just don't want to forget we never approved the minutes.
Oh, yes, minutes. I know, I'm sorry, I preempted you. Okay, let's, a motion to approve the minutes from the November meeting?
Okay, we have trustee Janice and trustee Harry Gold. Call guy.
Aye. All right, so Ridge Tribe West, parking issues. So we've talked about this a bunch. We are on the verge of taking over Middle Neck Road. I shared this afternoon some feedback from the two residents that were here last time. Kerry O'Callahan, right? And Sonny. So those were their suggestions. I think at this point, what they're looking for, you know, obviously their goal is to just eliminate the commercial parking, but we can't just do parking for residents. So I take away their suggestion is they're looking to limit parking to two hours between certain time periods to hopefully dissuade commercial traffic from in front of their homes. You know, we do have a petition from residents saying they don't want any changes. Last time we did this, we got feedback that the overwhelming part, I think, part of the community did not want changes. But at that point, we were proposing no parking. So I mean, want to hear board's feedback on this, but I'm thinking, hey, let's at least start a public dialogue on this and see where people want to go on it. And just make a proposal for a hearing on two-hour parking between 8:00 AM and 10:00 AM and 5:00 PM and 7:00 PM on Ridge Tribe West to Peachtree. And let's see, let's get the feedback for and against on it and try and promote a dialogue here. Comments, concerns?
So are we sure it's 8:00 to 10:00 and 5:00 to 7:00? Because one of the other emails asked for a different time period.
Yes.
When we have the public hearing, we should make sure that it's, I mean, obviously, we can change it, but I'd want to make sure that it's a consensus of those homeowners.
Yes, so the homeowner, one homeowner suggested 4:00 to 6:00, the other one said 5:00 to 7:00. I'm saying let's start with 5:00 to 7:00. We can get the feedback, whether it be 4:00 to 6:00, 5:00 to 7:00, and then input for or against or if the hours should change in any way. So for the proposal, I'd say 5:00 to 7:00 and 8:00 to 10:00. Limited parking. And, well, actually, no, it can't be two hours because those periods are two hours.
It's no parking during those two-hour periods.
Yeah, sorry. No parking, 8:00 to 10:00 and 4:00 to, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. My apologies, I misspoke.
So, so just so I understand the logic, the logic is that you, the morning one, I understand that that's the guys who would come in the morning, I guess, to work at the auto there.
Correct.
So the evening one is for?
The restaurant.
Restaurant.
Well, I shouldn't say restaurant restaurants. I mean, they, they feel like the traffic is coming from one restaurant and, you know, I think it's a compilation of all of it. What I'd also point out is I continue to go by there. I know, Randall, you do as well.
Every day.
I've been going there on Friday nights, the last couple of Friday nights, nobody parked it from those houses except the homeowners. But then I was talking to them tonight and they're like, tonight, it's packed. So again, there's no rhyme or reason to it. There's no particular day over another day. I think it's just driven by kind of the parking situation in the overall area.
I think what happens is some days Flower Hill Auto Body stays open later.
Okay. Mondays is a big stay, yes, and it always works.
Right, but also Flower Hill Auto, some nights, I know Tuesday a couple of weeks ago, they were open till like 7:00 because I drove by and the gates were open and everyone was working. So that'll add to this. Now, this local law, is this all, is it five days a week or six days a week?
I would say let's do six days a week.
Okay.
Again, we can adjust it based on feedback from the community. This doesn't commit us to actually doing this, but I think we need to give everybody a platform to speak.
I prepare a resolution introducing local law day 2022 regarding parking restrictions on Ridge Drive West. And regarding that, we're clearing the health at 7:30 on January 3rd. So are you checking, is somebody would offer that?
I will offer it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Lewandowski seconded it. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Any abstentions? All right. We will see what the public says. All right, Ronnie, village auditor.
Okay, so we put out an audit, an RFP for auditor. I would look up her reporting in three years. And, you know, they were adequate. Still some communication issues that we felt they could have done a lot better on. And it's pretty standard to go out for these kind of services over three to five years. So we received four responses, put together a chart. Below, below, I'm sorry, there's a zero missing from Norwalki Smith. On 1400, it's 1400. I would say that maybe like the, they all come very highly recommended. They're all remarking in municipalities of, well, Long Island. I would, I would say it might be a good idea for some members of the board to interview, maybe the two or three lowest of the leaders.
So Ronnie, just 2022 is 14,000 for Norwalki?
Yes.
14, yeah.
Yeah, 14,000.
Okay, because there's a typo then, because this says 1400.
Sure, address that.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. Yes, I am going to speak to them. If anybody would like to join me, please let me know. Is that good?
Keep moving.
Thank you. The deputy mayor will join. All right.
We can do all three lowest or just the two lowest?
I think there's a big difference between number three and not number two, so.
I'd say let's interview the first two. There's issues.
The two, we're going to do the two lowest.
Two lowest.
Right, okay.
You said in the past, I mean, they're all new, it's all new personnel there, but.
Let's do the two lowest.
Yeah. I don't think that there's any great advantage to them over the others.
Oh, okay. Sorry, it's getting late. All right, the next one, the sewer RFP.
I will send that out to Cameron and I will, of course, I want to.
Yeah, you may want to send this also to North Coast Civil. It used to be Gladys, it's been that.
Yeah.
Did we get a response from the sewer district on why we couldn't use a different firm?
No.
Why they were, I get why they're suggesting theirs because they're familiar with the system, but.
They want DMV, right?
Yeah, I mean, DMV is, you know, is their engineer.
Yeah.
They did offer combining those two phases to get, they want to slide this account.
DMV.
Yeah. So.
So I think we see what kind of numbers we get back from these other firms and then we can move over from there.
Sounds good. Do you need us to adopt this RFP or?
No, it's already, it's already done. We did that previously.
Okay. We did the special meeting via recording policy.
Okay, a lot of the villages have been visited by some guys who call themselves a Long Island auditor. Who comes into the hall and videotapes freely and creates disturbance. I attended a seminar run by Nikon that has less handled, set of destruction. And they did recommend that we have a carefully clean up policy. We're going now, video recording would be permitted in village halls to protect the privacy of those people having legitimate business in the village. So tape recording would be prohibited at all times. And that would be in the, you know, the lower office area.
I assume that that would with the, without approval of the village.
Without approval, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we just don't want, you know, people are trying to do business with the village. Some of it may be personal in nature. We don't want people coming in, videotaping them or trying to cause a scene and, you know, just for purposes. So this would give the staff the ability to say this, this action is is not approved without, you know, prior authorization.
It would enable us to be able to call the police and, you know, have this person arrested or taken away. What's this person doing? I'm sorry?
They posted online and asked, you know.
This is like the money making thing, it's very confrontational to us, like very dramatic.
Okay.
Takes a lot of money.
But but to be clear, this this policy might need to be modified because somebody does have the right to come to this board meeting and report, correct?
Well, this is, this is more, this is like a public space where during the meeting, there is no expectation of privacy in this place.
No, I know, but but the way this is written, that would kind of, the way it's written here, it would preclude someone from, we're recording it here where they have the right to do something.
Yeah.
Right.
So shouldn't this policy be modified? Because otherwise, right now, it's too restrictive. I understand why we're doing it, but I think it's restricting a right that somebody has.
Of the village hall where there is somewhat of an expectation of of privacy. You know, somebody is doing business in the window, there is an expectation that they're not going to be recorded and that somebody's not going to be, you know, listening to their transaction.
Or we say videotaping is prohibited except during public meetings.
I understand what you're saying, but what does this guy do?
Frank, we can take it offline.
Long Island.
So this is how I'd say we address it. In the interest of maintaining the privacy of those persons having legitimate business in Flower Hill Village Hall, videotaping is prohibited at all times without prior authorization or as part of a public hearing or a public meeting.
That works for me.
Okay, all right.
You can just have Menhasset.
Yes.
Does this, does this exclude our security monitoring?
Justin, no, sorry.
Well, if you wanted, you could make it a little bit clearer and just say videotaping by any other than village authorized equipment.
Right.
Our, our cameras don't record what you don't.
I know. But.
I, you, you make a valid point, yes.
But that would be prior authorization because we've approved the security system. Is that the way around?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's the way around.
Yeah, no, no, I started to write something in, but I was like, wait a second, we approved authorization of those purchases of the systems and everything else. So good call, Gary. Ronnie, I'll share this language with you. So again, in the interest of maintaining the video taping policy in the village would be in the interest of maintaining the privacy of those persons having legitimate business in Flower Hill Village Hall. Videotaping is prohibited at all times without prior authorization or or unless as part of a public meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay. I will make a motion to adopt that as the village's videotaping policy.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against or abstentions?
I just want to follow up with something from last meeting. The that infill, where they open the road on Wood Valley. It's getting worse and worse and worse.
I've, I've contacted them three times.
It's sinking.
I know, on the right side where you're.
Did they get, did they get their CO? For that new house?
Do you know the house we're talking about?
Do we still have?
Wood Valley, I think it's 20 Wood.
Do we still have their bond?
24 Wood Valley.
Don't we have a bond for word opening?
That's what we got to find out if they got their CO.
But we shouldn't issue COs in those people.
Well, they have a bond.
Yeah, they have to fix that thing.
All right, so Rich and Peter, can you guys get together on that tomorrow? And let's, if they're not going to take action, let's send them a letter and we have the bond. So let's get it taken care of before there is a bigger issue. We did the February 3rd. All right, history report. Go ahead. Yeah.
Okay. If you look over the last few history reports, you will see that I've gradually given the early history of the general area. And then the immediate trying to become a village. And what happened from there. And this one is, oh, now we are a village. What do we have to do? And there's a whole batch of things that they started to do. Some of which, like the zoning, they put off for a while because they wanted to see what other villages had done. And the next part will be how we grow. And that will be ready to start the brochure. And the brochure will include what the village does for people.
Awesome.
So that's where it stands.
What, what year was, I think Ronnie made me say this, what year was this? It says on May 12.
It's all covered.
Oh, okay, thank you.
It's all done each month. And you'll see.
Thank you.
The source of it varies because the only true source of this accurate is either the village minutes or the access that has gone. We have, and you can attest to this. We have people who are speaking about an history of the village and it never.
Okay.
So I go back to the very basics to derive and keep these back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we will move to, I make a motion to move to executive session.
One thing I just want to remind because I think it's important that the FEMA deadline was extended.
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Yes, go ahead.
You know, the village kindly organized FEMA inspectors to be here. And I don't know how many residents took advantage of that. But just for the remnants of, or the results of, you know, the storm damage from Ida, you now have the ability to file your plane up until January 4th. It was supposed to close pretty soon.
After FEMA?
Yes.
Yeah.
A chub also had flooding shorts.
Okay, so if you have that, you can.
They actually called me. I had some flood damage. But it immediately.
Okay, thank you. All right, folks, any public comments? I know we only have three residents left, so any public comments on anything? All right, seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session. We have to talk personnel matters and part of an attorney-client discussion.
Second?
Second from trustee Collins. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, none? Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the public.